Call to order the May 12th meeting of the Lynn City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Council Biden, absent Council Cahill.
Present.
Present Council Capano.
Present.
Present Council Jacutis. Present Council Calucci. Present Council Creighton. Present Council Seah. Present Council Floyd. Absent Council Lozey.
Present.
Present Council Net.
Present.
Present Council Trahan. Present.
And we all rise from among the silent following my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the majesty of America and to the general law for which it stands, one which is indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a motion to accept the notice from April 28th. The motion made, the meeting was made second. As everybody's had well known. Just a point of order. Council Biden is not present this evening. He is on a previously planned family trip to the west coast where he's celebrating, I believe, the 95th birthday of his aunt. So we wish him safe travels and he extends his hope that you accept his absence today. Communications.
We have no communications.
We have no communications. Public hearing.
First public hearing petition of B E P Corporation D B A Little Caesars Pizza for a restaurant in the business district of 58 Market Square.
And open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Sir, if you can step to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
Chris Alway, 11 Middle Road, April, Massachusetts. Business address at 58 Market Square.
And if you'd like to make a general statement whether you're guaranteeing your support for the proposal.
Yeah, I'm the current business owner. We own one pizza shop on 23 Lynn Street. We've been there for seven years. And we're going to have another one in the other side of the service service area.
If you'd like to sit close to the front here in case there's any questions from the council, we'd appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition and I close the public hearing. Councilor Capano.
Yes, I spoke with the inspection services. They're in agreement that the place looks really good. It's a former off-brow restaurant. I think it's a really good fit for that spot and I'd like to make a motion to grant.
A motion is made to grant is seconded. Any stipulations, Councilor Capano? Any stipulations?
No.
Okay, no stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden, absent Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Jacutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Next petition is the same company. It's petition of B E P Corporation D B A Little Caesars Pizza for permission for a sign permit at 58 Market Square.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
So the current sign is a mismatch without center and we're just looking to put in a standard Little Caesars sign. It doesn't fit the current signings there. It's actually a little bit more professional, channel letters. The other ones are boxed and actually take up a lot more room. So this one will actually be a smaller sign and it will be lit nicely.
If you could sit in the front row just in case there are any questions, we'd appreciate that. Any other people wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Wishing to speak, opening the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Councilor Capano.
Motion granted.
That one's remain granted. Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden, absent Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Jacutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Ten, yes. Next petition, petition of Demetrius Stephanides owner and the purchase and sale agreement for permission to convert illegal two-family dwelling, currently used as a funeral parlor, the two apartments to a three-family dwelling at 893, 893 A, Weston Avenue.
And open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Councilor Demakis.
My name is Thomas Demakis. I'm a lawyer with office in the 56th Central Avenue in Lynn, representing the petitioner. This is the location of La Barra's Funeral Home. It's been in business 60 years. There's two apartments above it. We researched, I had Mr. Dunton issue me his own opinion and said that the legal use of that parcel is a two-family, even though La Barra's been there for 60 years, it was never approved as a funeral home. My clients have a purchase and sale here. If you buy the property, you'd like to convert the first floor to another apartment so that it'll be a three-family. To do that, they need a special permit. We also need an variance for lack of sufficient, so the sufficient part from the Board of Appeals, we've gotten that a few weeks ago. So we're ready to go. That's proof of free deal of use.
Thank you, Councilor. You may want to stay over. Professionals, staying close to home. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Councilor? Capano?
Yes. Yes, I think this is a practical use for the space. It was a funeral parlor at one time, it was heavily traveled and they want to make use of the space. There was a unanimous vote of the Board of Appeals. Parking shouldn't be an issue and you know, there's probably going to be a new parking lot right across the street soon. So I'd like to make a motion to grant.
This is made, is seconded. Any discussion? Seconded. Seeing none, discussion, roll call.
Council Biden, absent, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Jacutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Ten, yes. Next petition, petition of Rich Hill Convenience Store. Man's Urma launch permission to transfer package to a wine and malt license from 2 Market Square to 573 Chestnut Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
My name is Tom Truax. I'm an attorney and I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. My office is located at 530 Loring Avenue in Salem, Mass. I just spoke with Council Lozey apparently between the last communication, Mr. Lozey and myself, some sort of misunderstanding as to what was going to be heard this evening. So I'm at the request of myself, on behalf of the petitioner, we are going to withdraw the petition at this time.
Motion is made, roll call. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I have to proceed with the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. We'll turn it over to Council Lozey. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition. Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing. Council Lozey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As Attorney Truax pointed out here, were some complications I had heard from neighbors and they were very much opposed to this. And at this time, I think we would honor the request for the applicant to withdraw their application. So I guess I would make a motion to permit a withdrawal.
I'm going to check with Councilor. Okay, Madam Clerk. I believe the proper procedure is for the attorney to submit that withdrawal in writing and maybe a proper procedure, Madam Clerk or Attorney Lamanna in Italian, maybe a motion to table.
Okay, I'll withdraw my early motion and change it to table.
One moment. Council Lamanna. Point of order.
The department of investigation would want them not to have them at a table because of constructive ransom approvals. But when the council accepts the withdrawal, that would be appropriate, I would say.
Counsel, if the request needs to be made right now first. What is the proper procedure for this moment right now? What is the proper motion? Motion to take no action? Is that it? We've stumped here.
Why don't you submit it right now?
Just.
Now, Mr. President, could we put this aside?
Motion to suspend this item. Is made, seconded. Oh, yeah, as I told you, as I said, this motion has been suspended. Taken out of order at the end of our agenda. Next, public hearing.
Petition of Eltran Januar Restaurant Erica Browder for permission to add wine and malt license to an existing restaurant in 228 Union Street.
And open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Man, come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Erica Browder and I'm the owner of 228 Howard Ocean. And I wanted to see if I could get a petition so that I can get a beer and wine license.
And if you, if you can sit at the front here, just answer any questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Seeing someone in opposition?
Hello. Evening. My name is Lieutenant Steve Dabrick with the police department in the community of Oxford, Special Investigation Unit. The police department is opposed to granting beer and wine license to Eltran Januar Restaurant. There are already five licensed establishments and one package store on the top of Union Street, Chestnut Street, down Freegan Square. The city is congested with motor vehicle traffic. The city is parking is impossible. There have been a number of incidents at these establishments concentrated in this small area of Union Street. That's my main concern. Within these five establishments, the police department has had impeded by the issue of overcrowding. We've had assaults, we've had fights, we've had loss of these, noise complaints. These incidents have a direct effect on quality of life for the people that work and live in that area. And I have no specific reason to believe that the elements of this restaurant are going to have a problem with business. But I think the area is too small to have a no license establishment there.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Councilor Calucci.
Mr. President, Chief Cottrell called me today with the same concerns, so I have to deny her unfortunately.
A motion has been made to deny and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden, absent, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Jacutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Ten, yes. Next petition is petition of National Grid Rafael Pena for permission to install 25 feet plus and minus a 1 to 3 inch concrete encased conduit from existing pole P 11 to property of 25 Wood Grove to provide service to the customer.
My name is Newian O. I'm here for National Grid Electric, 170th Division Department. I'm your representative for Rafael Pena's petition to install 25 feet of 1 3 inch concrete encased conduit from existing pole to property of 25 Wood Grove to provide service to our research home.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor? Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Opposition. Seeing no one in opposition? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. I believe this is Councilor Lozey's for.
Thank you. Mr. Capanos, I just have a couple of questions for you. Oh, you're here to represent? Oh, I'm sorry, did you get it?
Newian O.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to know if you scared off the other National Grid with the sheet?
Yes, I guess the question for the councilor is, did you draw the short straw to come here today? The last guy didn't last very long.
We were trying to get our streets fixed, so.
Council Lozey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
That is my concern. I'm just curious what the work, what it entails as far as cutting any concrete or asphalt in order to install this service. Could you describe it?
What it is, is the customer would trench across the road and they'll put in their concrete pipe up to out hole and they would make a trench. There, there in the customer, they'll repay it with their contract.
Okay, what we're referring to or alluding to is that this council is very concerned about various utilities throughout the city trenching across our roadways. And in a very short timeframe, we're finding that these trenches are failing and contributing to poor roads in our city. And we're trying to avoid that from happening. Is there something you could tell me to give us assurances that the trench will not be a problem?
They'll be repaid with electric issues, but where it is.
Would you be adverse to infrared trench repair?
I can take it from there, but I don't have that much knowledge of it.
Well, that would be just a more, it's a costlier type of trench patch than just your ordinary asphalt patch. I would like assurances that this trench, it's going, I'm assuming perpendicular across the street. Yeah. It is a dead end, but nevertheless, we would like our streets to be kept in as good a shape as we can maintain.
I can start to bring in that message to make sure that the locals can repay.
Well, I think I'd like to put a condition in that the trench be infrared.
I'll take a note. I'll put it on that.
I'm going to make it a condition anyway, so to make sure that this trench is done properly. Okay, thank you.
Council Seah.
Thank you. Sir, it says to go from the pole.
Yes.
Why can't you just go from the pole? Why you got the strip?
For the customer. The customer requested to have it go underground instead of overhead.
It's on the right of the line?
Yes.
So is that the only house on the street that has the service?
No, there's a couple of them that have the underground service as well and some of them are fed overhead.
Does the customer pay for the service to be brought in from the ground?
Yes.
National Grid paying for it?
The customer is paying for it.
So the added cost of having us infrared it to be on the customer, not a National Grid.
Correct.
It's not, is it confirmed? Yeah. So whatever this cost is going to be, it's going to be borne by the resident requesting this?
Because the customer is requesting the underground service. What National Grid does, we connect the service at the pole and the customer runs their conduit from the house to the pole.
And pass that cost on to the resident, is that correct?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Whatever cost, has there been a, an estimate given to this person?
Well, this is a new service. So what happens with a new service is that the customer, they only pay for a fee if it's a temp fee. But if it's a permanent service, it'll be from the company that we would make the connections and we would cover the cost because it's a new service.
So is that a flat fee that you charge any new customer?
Or a temp service? This is a permanent service.
So how do you charge a customer for permanent service?
I covers through the customer performance. I work in the during that.
I defer to the council. Council Trahan.
I know when you put in the National Grid council, if you want to change like oil to gas and they bring gas into your houses, like a $500 plastic and National Grid.
That's the gas. I question why that's.
Probably the same thing as the electric.
I'm not aware of the gas. I work the source.
It's probably a flat fee. So it won't matter whether it's.
Council Seah.
You said that temporary services, system construction.
Yes, but this is part of.
Building, is it being built by developer or is it being built by homeowner? Do you know existing houses?
It's an existing house. I think they will rebuild it. They do have a temp service for the premise and it's being fed right now overhead, but the permanent service will be underground.
Yeah, I think they add their wire pole more than most by vehicular traffic.
All right, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table. Motion has been made to table, which is not available. Roll call.
Council Biden, absent, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Jacutis. Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Ten, yes. Next petition is petition of National Grid Rafael Pena for permission to install Solion inline P 51-50, Pole 51 and Pole 53 Alley Street to install sidewalk fixture anchor at P 51-50 and P 52. Pole 51-50 shall be located approximately 56 feet plus and minus northeastally from P 53. Further install approximately 147 feet plus and minus 2 to 4 inch concrete encased conduit from existing rise P 52 Alley Street to its commercial street up to customers property at 175-189 Alley Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
National Grid Electric. This is petition, this is petition of inline pole to bring primary cable across the street to an existing pole. And up in there, we're going to go underground 447 feet to the customer's property to provide service to the commercial building.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor? Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Public hearing for those in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition? Close the public hearing for those in opposition. I close the public hearing. Council Capano.
Yes. Could you elaborate a little bit about the work? Like what's it for?
This is to bring the briefcase, electric primary service to the building.
To bring three page, single page?
Briefcase is a 120 to 40 type of service, first single page, 120 to 40. This is the most adequate way to provide service to that building, 180 Commercial Street. The easiest way for us to provide the service and for the customer on their rate of paying for the cost of the installations would be to bring, to install a new pole between the existing pole 51 and 53. Run electric cables across the street to an existing pole 52, just on the backside of the building. And from there, we'll install a riser and feed it underground and around the corner up until the customer's property. From there, we'll put the cable into the customer's transform bag.
What is Solion? Who does that mean?
Solion is just National Grid home, pole, not a riser.
Could I meet you with somebody down there so I could check, look at it? I'd rather do that. Okay. Really, a little bit. I'd like to see.
Okay.
I'd like to make motion to table.
This is made, table not available. Roll call.
Council Biden, absent, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Jacutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Next petition, petition of National Grid Rafael Pena for permission to install approximately 7 feet plus and minus, let me have that underlined, I'm sorry. A 1 to 3 inch conduit from pole 24 to property of 555 Weston Avenue.
And open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. This is your last chance to get one passed.
This is calling to go up to 12 feet just to bring service to the building.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Seeing no one else in favor? Close the public hearing for those in favor. Opposition, opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition? Close the public hearing for those in opposition. I close the public hearing. What's going to be, Council Jacutis?
I'm going to do motion to approve if he puts the street back in the condition it was in when he started.
Sir. Shut condition.
As a condition.
Well, this is, this won't be part of the street. It'll just be on the sidewalk, but it will be repaired.
The sidewalk?
Yes.
Back in the condition it was. Is it a concrete sidewalk though, or is it asphalt?
Concrete.
Is it going to be a concrete sidewalk replacing it? Are you wanting to replace the concrete sidewalk?
Yes, the customer's going to repay.
Council Seah.
You're digging a trench down a sidewalk. You're not just going to replace concrete in the trench, you're going to replace the sidewalk, right?
The sidewalk, yes. So motion has been made to approve the conditions that the sidewalk is put back into the condition it was prior to construction.
A new sidewalk.
Motion has been made, is seconded with condition that the sidewalk will be replaced with new concrete. And that is seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, good luck. Roll call.
Council Biden, absent, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Jacutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Ten, yes.
One and three at bat. Okay, Council Seah.
Thank you. I just want to understand something. City's just going to have a survey done for the roads in the city. And it's estimated that the cost to repair the roads is at $39 million. So that's why the city council acting or questioning you about whatever you know. I don't want you to think that we're trying to obstruct, to spark it up to the National Grid. I just want you to understand, okay?
Sir, if you want to stick around and see how we treat the next gentleman, you'll feel a lot better. All right, next public hearing.
Petition of Comcast Timothy Broder for permission to place 1 4 inch PVC conduit from existing pole manhole on Andrew Street. 30 feet plus and minus in a west走向 direction to the property at 1 Andrew Street.
Open the public hearing for those in favor. Mr. Broder, come on down.
Warmed up.
Put your last, you should be happy for your turn down.
Timothy Broder, Comcast, 55 Comcast Street, North Reading. In favor of the petition. Any answer to the question?
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor? Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one else in opposition? Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counselor Chakoudas.
I'm going to say what I always say. Motion to approve with stipulation, I want the road put back in the same condition, better condition than a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Barton Abson, Counselor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano. Abson, Counselor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Netness.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Next petition is petition of Comcast Timothy Broder for permission to intercept existing conduit on Silsby Street and place new manhole. From new manhole, place 1 4 inch PVC conduit, 35 feet plus or minus in the southwestwardly direction to the property at 270 Union Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor, Mr. Broder.
Yes, Timothy Broder, Comcast, 55 Comcast Street, North Reading. I hear to speak in favor of the petition.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I have the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counselor Calucci.
Question, question. Through the chair.
Through the chair, yes.
Is that a normal way to do this? It's going to be, I'm not sure where the trench is, I think the trench is on one side, it's not right in the middle. There's a trench that we did last year that comes down Silsby and feeds to the building on the north side of the street. That trench will intercept, I think it's on that side of the street, it's definitely not in the middle, and then we plan on putting a manhole there and coming directly across the street, you know, out of that manhole, right to property at 270 Union Street.
Any other questions?
Diane, there's a caution, Diane, I told you, you want to speak, pick that, you have, can you, you can give the rest, please? Do you want to, do you interrupt the, the trench? Do you want to do it?
Engage.
Oh, there's a stip- okay, motion made and accepted with stipulation that Comcast will infrared the patch. Seconded by Counselor Trahan, then the record. Seeing no other discussion, roll call.
Counselor Barton Abson, Counselor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas. Yes, Counselor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Netness. Yes, Counselor Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. And one more. Petition of Comcast Timothy Broder for permission to intercept existing conduit on Silsby Street and place new manhole from the new manhole, place 1 4 inch PVC 25 conduit, 25 plus and minus feet in a northwestwardly direction to the property at 8 Silsby Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor to do that.
Timothy Broder, Comcast, 55 Comcast Street, North Reading, hear to speak in favor of this petition. The good thing about this petition is we're coming out of the same manhole, and we're going the other way, so trench full curve, curve. Infrared.
Infrared, curve and curve. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else speaking in favor, close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition? Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing for those in opposition, close the public hearing. Counselor Chakoudas.
Motion to approve infrared the patch, and are we supposed to?
Motion made with said infrared stipulations. Anyone else wishing, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Barton Abson, Counselor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Netness.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
That's all for public hearings. Public hearings to be set down, there's no objections, we'll take them all at once.
We have that one that's been set aside.
We still have one rule today. Would you like to suspend the rules to take said...
So move, Mr. President.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules to take up another public hearing, opposed to the other's habit, to work back up onto the...
Ridgedale.
Ridgedale.